You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I'm Cory here with them all. I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self will not be here. Michael York.
Yep.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
And Slack Karasinski.
Here.
And alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
And Michael Scungeo alternate and Brian Bragel alternate, neither of those are here. I'm going to seat Steve for Brandon. And the agenda this evening. We have the approval of the April 13th minutes. Applications in public hearings, we have one, Planning Board number 23-010, Site Plan Review. Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services, has submitted an application for site plan review to construct a commercial landscaping facility and attach multifamily housing on undeveloped land located at the junction of West Swansea Road and West Street. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 73, Lot 12-2, and is in the business district. Upon finding that the application meets submission requirements of Site Plan Review regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete and a public hearing may follow immediately. It will be scheduled for a time and date certain. Under discussions and other business, we have Site Plan Review regulations, which is revamping our regulations. We have Site Plan Reading Workshop and any other business as may be required.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion now?
Yes, you may.
I want to move that at eight, at eight thirty this evening, that we suspend everything adjourned and carry on to the next meeting.
Okay, your motion is that the meeting will end at eight thirty and anything that hasn't been dealt with will be carried on to next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Steve Malone, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that will be that. Anything is outstanding, we will continue to the next meeting. Okay, regional impact, or no, let's do the minutes there, April 13th minutes, does anyone have anything on those? And if not, then a motion to accept as presented. Motion by Jane, seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I suppose. Okay, regional state. And regional impact vote? Any that notify something that may have a regional impact on the metric county? Nothing is on there that has regionally bad than they stating, so okay, motion by Victoria that nothing on tonight's agenda requires us to notify surrounding towns. Seconded by Jane Johnson, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we just bring this right up to application of public hearings, which is Planning Board number 23-010. And that's the Fieldstone Land Consultants, on behalf of Lesser's Four Seasons Services. They've submitted an application for a site plan review. Construct a commercial landscaping facility and attach multifamily housing on undeveloped land located in conjunction of West Swansea Road and West Street. Property is next, map 73, Lot 12-2, business district. For a part, yeah, we will be deciding whether the application is complete. If it is complete, we'll accept it as complete and then we'll probably use rounds for public hearing. So if you would just go down the guidelines of what happened in regulations as to completeness of the application?
The application was submitted for landscape use with adjacent five unit. Went for zoning board last week. Got approved for two special exceptions for the five unit multifamily attached to the landscaping business. Also, the second special exception was the whole storage outside, which was just in the approvals for mulch. Saw that us, there was a summer facility back here. Materials for landscaping over all these bulk storage areas. But those two were obtained and approved by the zoning board last.
So just run down the checks.
So we have name and address of the owner, shown here, a photo block, and also list his name. Tax map and lot number, this is a photo block, also shown on here. Others, tax maps and lot numbers, physical lots. North arrow, written in graphic scale. So we have north arrow here. Written and graphic scale, so we have the written and the graphic scale right here. Name and address of the flat preparers, that would be Fieldstone. Vicinity sketch, so the vicinity sketch, that's the corner. Names and addresses of the abundant landowners on an existing condition plan, we have them all listed, we also submitted the butters list, of the existing conditions, and it's the full address and name of each bar with a tax map and lot number. Physical features of the land and land within 200 feet of the site, so we've located all physical features, including homes, retain pavement, and infrastructure along West Street and the borders of the property. Here. Perimeter boundary lines and lot area, the square foot acreage, that's shown right here, beginning stacks blocks. These are the outer corners here on the site plan, I highlighted them for point, so this orange area here is the subject. Shape size, location of existing structures on the site, and also here, dimensions and footage. Location, name and width of any existing proposed roads on property, so that is the we've shown widths, but these are not second. Identification of access from the site, public street, site distances from the access points, curb cuts and proposed changes, if any. So there's two curb cuts on the project, one is directly on Route 10. This was permitted with NHDOTs, with driveway permit, as part of that permit. They check the site distances to see 400 feet in each direction. The other one is onto a town road, which is West Street, so it's free access. Location, number, parking and loading spaces. We have the parking spaces here, along the front of the business, there's nine there, and there's eight in the rear that would service the five. Landscaping plans, those are just separate, only just for landscaping. Those are the landscaping plan and details.
Yep.
Location, type and nature of existing and proposed lighting. That's also shown on the full feed by itself, which is providing full cut off pictures and details. Neat, natural features such as water bodies, legeal graphic and wetlands. So there is a wetland on this portion here, northwest corner, vice acting as existing proposed grades and topographic combos. Intervals, this grading sheet that shows our existing existing
Take your time.
Needs of providing water, so utilities are shown. Coming off of off of West Street would be water and sewer. That would show there. So that's the water supply, surface drainage patterns, so that's shown on the grading sheet here, so we have arrows of grades that are proposed. It's pretty flat, you know, most people probably know the sub, but it's a fairly level. Copy of certification by licensed subject designer, the existing system. So there is no existing system and there is no proposed, it's going to be copy of certification by location and type of proposed. Showing right here, connecting to West Street. Location of existing and proposed onsite well, showing a 75 foot radius. At this time, we do not have a well. Go with that, so we're planning on connecting to the West Swansea Law Company. They are yet to provide information back, and if there's enough pressure and volume to connect, if not, then there would be proposals. Soil survey data, so that is shown on our existing conditions plan. So we have soils. Test bit data that was submitted for soils, shown across the site. And it was all one soil, it was done based on test.
It's there somewhere.
Right here.
I read it.
Yep, right here, and our test bit data, they're a bunch of backwards. Location of existing proposed easements, deed restrictions and covenants, there are no restrictions. Here, architectural plans, which are submitted.
Okay, great, thank you. The board members? Is it complete enough to go to a public hearing?
Yeah, there's, I move that we can go to a public hearing, we have enough information to go from there.
And motion by Michael York, that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing, is there a second? Second by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion on witness? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so now we're going on public hearing, and we'll open up the public hearing and make the presentation.
Thank you. So as discussed, this portion here to the north is a proposed landscape business. There'll be an interior retail shop, we're here at the showroom, into the rear, there'd be kind of a space, job where we could have our shelving. For that showing landscaping, these revised plans that we provided tonight. Minor changes from what was initially submitted, changes needed are based on we added sidewalks, as a question, so prior we had sidewalks along the apartment buildings here. It was requested, and in like conditional approval, we had a connection point from that sidewalk to the West Street side. Also sidewalk connecting between the driveway here for the residential side to the dumpster pad here, so residents can walk directly across the paved surface and utilize the same dumpster, so it will be one dumpster onsite through a vault of commercial use and for recreational use. We've also added some garden covered salt storage, as that would also be a condition. Supposedly, there's changes from what was initially submitted to the planning board, or some of those changes, those three items. The materials that was already on prior. But listen more on the salt shed, that the salt shed would be built to the what the town salt shed standard is, and also reference in the DES, best man so DES has items, guidelines, the vault for salt storage areas. So that's been noted on. Those three items that were listed as conditions of approval for zoning board are added on these plans.
Okay.
So overall, the outdoor storage bulk items are here along the northern border. This will be a paved surface. So in front of these bins, someone could pull in with a trailer, have it loaded by staff, so Lesser's business, they would load their vehicles. Or trailer would not be able to publicly load, they would sell bulk materials, mulch, stone, those type of items. Very similar to what ground up at in Swansea. Very similar types of items. Storage for trailer equipment and parking in the rear of the lot here. And pre-sold materials and jobs, jobs that surplus, so I could be able retaining all some of the other items that we're doing plans or things for customers, those will be sold back here. Salt storage bin here, so that's been called out, that's going to end up being having imperreal surface, concrete walls and covers, so a lot of the roof over. And we're going to get into that, so that's based on the best man of the practices, also we're going to detail out as part of the building burnout package, is how that's constructed. Meet with someone with the town, whether it's Mike, others, to get an idea on how the town barn is built as well, and have something similar. So that meets our zoning requirement. So on the south side, that is where the five apartments are located here. They are connected, so during the zoning board hearing at that time, the bottom is going to be pergola, so it's between either a roof connection or pergola, open raptor type. So now it's going to be a roof connecting that, no walls, so it's open. They can have storage of display area for patio furniture. Items of that nature out front. There's also next to the parking lot in the front here would also be display areas for outdoor amenities that do itself to customers. So ultimately, the site is split into two, the commercial
Recording stuff.
Coming off of the the Route 10 driveway. Nine parking spaces here, five along the north wall, separating everything. And then residential up in the south, so the site really balances between where commercial is located on the north side and the east side of the property. This is all commercial, and then the west and the south side is residential, so the site kind of transitions in the same way, where we put the residential near the existing abutting residential, and the commercial near the abutting commercial residential. So that's site plan. Existing conditions, so we've submitted, that's the show of the site is now, as mentioned, there's a wetland in the upper northwest corner of the lot. It's clearly flat, we've got brass building on. Grading and drainage plan, also utility shown here. So stormwater is going to be handled by two methods, we're going to have the rain guard to the northwest here. That will take from the work of the lot during here. It's connected with a pipe across the front to a brass treatment swale coming down to an infiltration basin in the southeast corner of the lot. This will also take drainage from the road, so there's currently two outlets that we're calling it over brick aprons, and that drainage calculation is involved in the sizing of this. Everything comes off of the building, comes to this area here, connects to here, creates if it was to overflow in a 50 year storm, it can back up and there's an outfall to the wetland, but it does not outfall in a storm accord.
Is that the purpose of that pipe, or is it the purpose of it to drain this way into that front swale?
Yeah, it's it's connected here, so this is fairly flat through here, so during technically a 50 year and under. It's going to come to this front basin. Also the full training in the rain garden in the back. During really high events, it can well, this in the back, it can be an outfall towards the wetland. If needed, so it's sized for 50 year storms, so if it ever exceeded a 50 year storm, it has an area to spill out, not towards the rain, or towards residential, it's going to the west.
And that transfer pipe is for that, right?
Correct.
Then would you say from the front storage area, it would go across through that pipe to that wetland in the back?
Correct. Yes. And we also, where we added the sidewalks, curbing along here, sidewalks, and there's now catch basin that was not there before, we had a cross driveway culvert to bring water from this side of the site to that also the infiltration basin. That will now connect with a pipe to a catch basin and now fall, the same as before. Set that up to catch base based on the curbing on the sidewalks. Grading. Lighting plan. So lighting is full cutoff fixtures. Pretty minimal, it's all seven fixtures. Landscaping, there's substantial amount of landscaping proposed here. So the owners really wants to make this look nice along Route 10, if you want it. The building style also to have frontage stored in Route 10, to really make it look like commercial and business and attract people that way. And in the front, residential facing the other way. So between the amount of frontage along West Street, along Route 10, determine how many trees are on this corner here and along the frontage. So we're utilizing all these plantings that are here to make up our frontage requirements for trees. And then shrubs mixed in, and then where the butts the residential along the rear here, there's currently no plantings, these are going to be a two foot high soil berm with pine trees planted. And that's based on our coal store, where there's a budding residential. So this will end up being screened with pine trees along the rear. The abutting trees that are right on the property line, so there's an eight inch maple, there's a 24 inch oak tree, and there's a birch cluster, that's all right here, those all remain, and then we have a stockade fence that runs along here, so the stockade fence would be six foot in height, so that's a solid fence to provide screening separation between the budding properties, residential and the commercial residential. There was a question on the one pear tree that was called out, so that was a species that's listed in the regulations for site plans as a species that can be used, I know we use them on other sites in town and in the union as well. But Conservation Commission had a concern on that tree. The applicant is willing to change that for another species, if so, one he's much more of an expert landscaping in trees, so if there's something that was wanted by the board, he'd be willing to change that, it's one tree. You can change that species out.
The on the corner of West Street and Route 10. You have a tree, what's the setback from the edge of Route 10 to that tree?
To the center line, so only setback is 30 feet, we're roughly centered on that, so
Off of Route 10 to that corner.
Yep, to that tree.
White street, yes.
Yes, from the right of way, you're 15 feet, this is a 30 foot setback, we're centered in the setback 30 feet to edge of pavement, you're probably 45.
I just, I can't, couldn't see the number.
Yep.
The concern about oncoming traffic, trying to come out of West Street, that's all.
Yeah, so the intersection payment, you're actually up right here, so even a stop mark or a stop sign is well in forward of these trees.
I don't know if you're aware of it, but West Street and Route 10, there is a school spot, stop right there.
That was, that was one of the reasons for the zoning board wanting the connection for sidewalks.
I'm not sure, because those apartments, not very rarely going to have kids in them.
Yep.
But there are several kids that go back and forth to catch the bus there. Concern is, and it probably more sense that where that tree is in the corner, if they have a little thing there for a school bus waiting area. You see what I'm saying? Right there on that corner, right there, it'd be better to have, instead of having a tree there, in my opinion, we should have a little school bus stop right there, because the bus does stop right on that corner. For safety sakes for the children, mostly.
With this stop in there?
Those are stopping there now?
Yeah.
Without, without?
They have been for quite some time, yes. Right on that.
This project isn't putting any kids probably in there.
No, but I know they're not, probably not putting any kids in there, but that's, that's a concern of safety with a school bus stopping there.
Excuse me. I think that I think that concern should be addressed perhaps to the bus company, and they should stop further in West Street, because stopping on the corner of Route 10 is not safe anywhere.
The high school doesn't go up West Street, it goes down, it comes down south.
Well, they need to find a different pickup spot, that one's dangerous. I don't know why they would pick up kids on the corner of Route 10 in any case.
Well, there's several, there are several stops along Route 10 for children.
They stop right on Route 10, don't they?
Yes.
They don't go down west?
Well, there is one that goes up West Street, that's an elementary one. But he doesn't stop right there, the one for the high school stops right there, West Street and Route 10. A little after seven o'clock in the morning. I don't, I catch him every time I want to go out, he's there.
There's also potential sidewalk improvements along Route 10 that could be coming in that. If it's, if they're stopping along Route 10, and maybe that's part of that project with the grant to have a bus stopping.
Are we putting sidewalks right that area?
It's proposed.
It's proposed, it hasn't been adopted by the state for the tenure plan yet. Bus stops are not currently target that in current project, but I would say Mr. Lesser would not be allowed to place a bus stop on that corner, because it would be in the front of the setback. And nothing is allowed to be put in this first 30 feet of Route 10.
Okay, so we just need to be aware that there is a school bus stop there. Your notes, the notes from the zoning board speaks of the narrowing of Route 10 and the cross marks, is this what you're referring to, part of that project?
Yeah.
There was a sidewalk all along West Street here. The only change to the sidewalk is where the curb cut is. Providing connection point with that sidewalk there. And then these trees are certainly more based on a little frontage. The others middle are all construction details. So this is the floor plan. It's definitely doors, the five apartments, single story. There's no doors along the Route 10 side for the residential, and that's trying to make all residential go towards the rear and look more commercial and present the business to the Route 10 side to kind of separate those two uses further. So we have retail and display, this area here, including the two offices and restroom, it's about 3,000 square feet in size. We have about 4,800 square feet in size for the garage workshop area. To the north, there's two overhead doors, and to the south, there's an overhead door. These are the elevations presented. So the metal panel siding, the first 36 inches through here is going to be a base veneer stone around the building. Aesthetics, this is the Route 10 side on the bottom portion of the plan, this is what's going to face Route 10, so you have a gable end with a porch, that sidewalk runs along this frontage here, where this line and layer group connection is here. This will be the open display area where you have patio furniture, grills, any items that work. And then just the Route 10 frontage on the residential side. So that's, that's overall.
Can I just clarify something? Sorry, I'm not supposed to speak up, I'm sorry. We're not going to be selling patio furniture and grills, we're going to be doing more hardscapes, outdoor spaces, patios, outdoor kitchens, something that's tougher that are built into the ground, like a hardscape. We're not going to be selling the furniture and like grilled, you buy at home, it won't be anything in that. It'll be, it'll be, I don't know if you guys have driven past Powell Stone and Gravel in Winchita, but it's, it's, it's kind of what I want to reference off of our building, is to just kind of make it nice, bold and beautiful. It's the face of our company, so draw a lot of attention with this.
Is there an area where shrubbery or trees and whatnot will be stored and or displayed?
Yeah, so we have, in the rear here would be pre-sold job and supplies and storage area.
That's pre-sold, what about four seater?
We're not, we're not in nursery, so we're not selling plants. If we have jobs that people need plants, we'll either go to Allen Brothers or Agway and pick up our materials there. And then we'll store them till our jobs are, pick them up that day and store them.
Do they need processing of earth materials on site, like screening and?
No, no, nothing that will be screened during business, to get the site up to where we need it to be, we might screen some work. That's part of the construction process, yes, but we won't be screening. Correct, we won't, we'll be, we'll be pulling material in from other sources and so on.
So the pre-sold material and job surplus stuff, that's going to be the stones that you?
Yeah. We won't have any screeners or that type of construction.
And then when you say trailer and equipment parking, so you've got what, a mini excavator and a motor and a ball cat? And those would be?
They'd mostly be trailers, like our It'll mostly be trailers, uh like our mode trailer, our dump trailer, our trailer to haul the equipment with, that'll mostly be stored outside. Everything else I'd like to store inside, that's kind of why building the building, so the skid steers will be stored inside and the excavator and that type of stuff, some maybe work trucks overnight. Till they go out on the job.
Is there going to be any storage of uh fungible, you know, extremely fungible material? You know, propane tanks and stuff like that?
Yes.
Five gallon gas can.
So the color of the building, what does that want to do? The siding?
Uh, we haven't fully decided yet, but we would like to do some sort of um like a gray or like a beige or something general neutral, but um nice, like a good look for the for the rest of the block. Because I know that there's some.
A neutral color.
A neutral color, something that's gonna look nice with the veneer feature that we that we go with.
Is that gonna be metal pad?
Yes, the top. Top portion being metal panel siding and below being the veneer stone.
Well, we could finish you on the residential.
It may match as well.
Like the same uh stone uh hole and a kick there.
Yeah, yeah, just the, it'll it'll wrap around the entire building, so front and back.
Something about the access uh into the top of the West Street. Is that going to be utilized also? Inference or not?
No, so this was from our zoning board, there there is a garage door on each side, so they could go through. It's not gonna be a untrapped between them. I'm using this, it's just gonna be if they pull something in here to work on in the shop and need to pull through the truck. We've shown that they would add a sign precaution trucks and then detailed what that sign could be. That would just be building mounted here. So there's extremely low likelihood of commercial traffic coming through. This is, this is dedicated really for residential. You might have once in a while, they utilize this garage door to to pull a truck in. It's not gonna be a third way from the commercial side through the building to the.
Now, you mentioned the area of their trucks. Now, they're not going to have uh broken down vehicles laying over the place or anything of that sort, are they?
No, no.
No, we, we, all of our trucks are installed.
But you were just saying, I'm concerned if you look down roads.
I'm, yes, and and that was actually part of the sales agreement is it would never be a mechanic junkyard. I have, it it's, the point of this building is it's the face of our company. It it needs to be beautiful, it needs to be nice, it needs to draw attention, good attention. If we have broken down trucks or equipment, it's not, it's gonna be ugly, so so no. We we don't have any, all of our trucks are inspected and registered for the road, so we don't, we don't store them.
Apparently there'll be no heavy maintenance trucks, slight maintenance.
Yeah, slight maintenance.
Oil, oil change, scratch iron, whatever.
Time changes and that that's on inside show, we'll have a, we'll have a spot to work on our trucks, but that's, that's, I'm not a mechanic. I don't want to be, I like working in the dirt, so.
Going back to your uh lane studies, it says you did test pits for surface, correct?
Yes.
What's the water table depth there?
I don't think it's very deep.
Because that's not mentioned anywhere and it's a lot of concern.
Yeah, so on our drainage drainage plane, we call out the test pit locations also on our existing conditions. So this area here was targeted for the infiltration in the detention basin because uh we have seasonal high waters over under inches deep, so it's still over eight feet was dug. That was the depth of the bed with no seasonal high. Up in this portion here where it transitions on soils, much shallower, so we had forty two inches and then it gets shallower and shallower obviously right back. So that was the target for doing more rain garden treatment area here and more infiltration and detention basin in the front was because of that water cable, so it's soils are less favorable towards the north portion of this, which is awesome. There was through the the woods here, the wetlands up there.
And when was the date on those test pits?
The the test pits were done this year.
Here in November or October.
October. In October?
October.
It's one of the driest months of the year, isn't it?
Yes, but they go off of um the soil conditions and you can see what's called modeling and oxidation in the soils. And you can tell where the water line is. It's better to actually do a test pit during when it's dry because you can see in the soils without standing in a mud hole. Get a cleaner side of the test pit hole and see where that side is. So certified soil scientist does that test pit and they'll, they can determine where water comes up to based on the soil. Similar to what's on, so that's on for separate system.
I have a couple of questions concerning the apartments. Why do you mean there's seasonal or seasonal help, are you coming in to work for your company?
No.
Okay, the second thing is, I am aware that you can only have two people residing in each one because of the square footage requirement, two hundred per person. So at no time will it be a small family in there.
Each each unit is five hundred and seventy six square feet, so they are very, a single bedroom, so they're a small apartment.
The saying that according to code, you have to have a minimum of two hundred square feet per person. And where it's under six hundred, you cannot only, you cannot have four in there.
Correct, yeah, four hundred, we're at five seventy six, the minimum of the four hundred. And they're a single bedroom.
Yeah, I don't think you're understanding my saying.
Yeah, they can't have a third person, there's not even a mud room. So.
Uh, we're looking at traveling nurses. So that's the reason why we don't need a family in there because I also would like to keep it simple.
So that landscape berm you said is how high?
Two feet.
Two feet high and then the tree is gonna be how high? I mean, when you plant them.
Planting would be, you know, six feet, five, six.
And you've got.
No, Swansea uh trees, pine trees grow very quickly and very large, but they get top. So they they tend to form a very good screening. That's what we've seen in other projects. Very quickly they fill in, you can top them, give guide.
Just looking at the screening between the existing house right there, I know you have a fence, a stockade fence on the east side of that property there, but it looks like it ends right there, wasn't it?
Yes. Yes, the fence runs right along this property. It does not, it does not wrap around here.
No, I'm wondering why it doesn't wrap around. Any particular reason other than maybe the cost or something?
Uh, no, not the cost, I'm not a huge fan of fences. I think having shrubs and and plants are much better looking longevity. Of a fence, a fence is something that we could put up. But I just personally don't like the look of just a regular fence. I think having plants and shrubs, they also block noise a little bit too, so.
I agree with that.
That's, that's the reason why I actually didn't even want to do a fence, but having fences I think will help, so.
I'm thinking from the neighbors looking that way or or annoying and stuff, you know, those pines are gonna fill in at some point, they're about twenty four feet. For a while there, it's gonna be open, looking right out their backyard, right into your storage area for whatever they have.
And if that's something that we need to do, I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
I see the board has the same out of it, I'm thinking that.
I I agree, when you put plants in, they're not mature height, so so maybe for the first ten years or so, I mean, that's, the fences nowadays, what lifespan on a fence before changing is what? Fifteen, twenty years, if you go vinyl, wood, still ten years or so, maybe less, so at that point, it's gonna look raggedy, you replace where a plant, you plant once, you take care of it and last.
I would think you'd have both, I mean, the fence, and then when the fence is done, the plants will probably build in.
Anyway, let be a, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Let be a wooden stockade or a?
To be determined.
If it's wooden, the uh what I call the good side?
Yes, facing, facing absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Is it gonna be gated, uh the access from Route ten?
Not unless we need to.
What are you gonna be using typically to to load the uh materials?
Uh, skid steer.
Skid steer or anything like that.
Essentially the same, that side of is essentially ground up, like the materials.
Pretty much the same.
Exact same business, yes. Except much cleaner, it's gonna be paved.
I agree with Scott about this, we need to have um a stockade fence along the border where the the pine trees are. And just, you know, I mean, this throughout Swansea, whenever we cover residence, little strip running up against the business, we have to have, you know, sort of go to a higher level to protect the residential nuisance, so that's the thinking behind it.
Yeah, and that's what the tree count, that's why there's so many trees, that's based on the the regulation really. Residential zone is already used. But we carry that.
It's it's interesting though, you you have those spaced like about twenty feet apart along the you know, the west, that along the area where there is no stocking fence. And then once you get down to the area where there is a stocking fence, they're really gone together, there's much higher density of those.
Because the residential home was right here, so it was really just to thicken up the screening right here, the home, so that you know, traffic turning in right here or exiting, they're they're completely blocked between tighter plantings and the fence. So that's, that's why they're tighter, we tighten them up in that.
So I guess I'm thinking, um, why would you not be as vigilant about screening on the to the the north of that same house, screening very carefully to the to the east of the house?
Yeah, so these, with the berm, so you're gonna have the berm and then these trees on top.
The berm's a?
And then the, really the salt area is like the small buildings that block, so you're not gonna have a lot of, there's not gonna be much for this storage, it's gonna be pallets and his materials in this corner and the trailers parked here, so we have employee parking here. So that's blocked by the dumpster enclosure, by this salt enclosure, that's where they go. I don't see what, there's nothing here that would impact the lights or, you know, that they'd be looking at. The stationary.
Yeah, it's it's not about lights, it's more about um people living on the other side who are looking into commercial operation, but what's the protection for them?
Right, which is why there's this many trees, it's based on the regulation to require that trees.
Yes, our regulations are min. So we can ask for more if we want more.
Or we could, yeah.
So it's a two foot high berm that's, how how broad is it gonna be at the top?
Yeah, so we have the, oh, at the at the top, we we're carrying at least four feet at the top and we have about kind of the line across there, so we have the line showing.
So that's, the line shows the summit of the the library that's at the top?
Most trees, I mean, they're that, they all are.
Which, so there's a lot of difference in this Austrian pine trees of shape. Do you, do you have a a variety selected?
I I haven't fully selected yet, no.
Because some of them are linear or, you know.
Yeah.
You mentioned employee parking on the back, where's that indicated?
It's on the side plan. There are all the parking lots here, we just did an outline, so he parks here, so the employee parking. Building, so there's no doors on this side, so.
So.
As far as spaces go?
Yeah, it's not gonna be dedicated uh linear, you know, so this is gravel out here, it's just gonna be, so he has, he has four employees. This is more than enough space for about six to seven vehicles. But it's not gonna be dedicated stripe spacing, the stripe spacing here are paved and those items would be, you know, dedicated for for customers coming in, but this might just be they park the vehicle there. So we just drew outlines of of where he could fit trailers, park equipment, so those those blocks are shown here. But there's not gonna be striping of any nature sign, this is a parking space for a truck, for a trailer, for a, it's a grass surface.
Now, the salt storage area. Better be a concrete block type, uh, okay, is there any way you can put siding on it? Because that portion of it does not have a fence. And for ten years, so those bushes grow, he's gonna be looking back in your uh symbolize.
It doesn't have a fence unless the planning board requires one.
Right, but. Yeah.
So.
That's, I was playing on running the the sidewalk. I was gonna do it with like the, I don't know, I don't know if the town of Swansea.
They have the required parking spaces that they need with the building, that's access for the employees could park there. As far as the spaces that they need for the building, they have them there.
Yes, on the paved spaces, we have enough for for what's required. We're just saying that if they.
Clearing that out here.
Going back to your fencing problem on West Street by the residents. I would suggest that we go west from that corner. A little bit better sound looking for that uh residence. If you're gonna be run running equipment in the back there, it's gonna be kind of loud, they're not gonna be very happy. So anything that we can do to help that and that sound would be, sure would be much appreciated. To follow around.
Yeah, right here, so.
Yeah.
I wanna hear your guys' thoughts too, because I don't, I don't want to just put this ugly building up and everybody's mad. I want everybody to be happy. I know I can't please everybody, but I want, I want to please as many people as I can, so I I I understand what you're saying, I'm not opposed to that.
What are your hours of operation?
Uh, employees come in around seven thirty and they're usually gone by four thirty five. Some days it's later, some days it's earlier.
So I'm thinking of the resident residents there. Without a fence. In the wintertime, headlights can be shining into their yards and bed, when those.
Well, let's have a consensus now of the board, so we don't keep on going back and forth, back and forth through the fence thing. Do you, do the planning board members think that we're gonna require a fence? And that would be along the hundred and fifty, about a hundred and fifty feet from where the stockade ends now west, as Richard had said, to we'll say this in right here, that back section right there we're talking about. So do you think the board would require that as a condition of approval? Yes, you do, you do, you do.
I could see making it a requirement of a fence until the landscaping's grown in and.
With that in there.
Have a veneer block on it or something, you know, once the trees.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay, so we're not gonna have to beat that one anymore, we're probably gonna require a fence, it's approved, it's a condition. Good, so let's continue.
So what's the surface, so on top of the berm, what, there's trees coming up, but what's the surface treated, what is surface treated?
Probably end up mulching it, um, or we might just have it be grass that can be mowed. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a a crazy slope, so um I assume it'll either be mulch or fence, and mulch we'll have to do everywhere and it's gonna be quite a bit, but whichever I think would look better and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's up to you, put the mulcher or grass. We didn't call out if it would be.
Yeah, I I think that's still up in the air, we'd probably start with grass and, I mean, it's gonna be maintained weekly. We end up jumping to mulch, then we'll jump to.
So the area that they show around under your lanterns?
Yep, that that will be managed, that will, that will be mulched, yep, yeah, any planting. Yep, yeah, any plantings in the front will look, will be, will be mulched and, and edged out with beds. Um, the trees along the back, we'll just do grass for now.
I was wondering, I just don't understand how it works, and that's snow storage.
Okay.
Snow storage.
Yeah, I just don't see that it's reasonable to, um, I under, I can see that you've got the trees sort of gone together on West Street to keep some space open, shove snow, um, towards West Street, that would be one place you'd put it.
Same up the apartments.
Um, well, no, it's more the, uh, it's more the, the.
Snow storage here, snack storage.
Yeah, yeah, the area that, it's that area right in there, where there are, um, if you look on the landscaping plan.
So we, we'll, we'll probably use.
There's, there's a void between.
Yeah, so there's enough room in between those trees and the parking lot with snow.
So you're gonna just be shoving it up, sort of against Route Ten, is the idea?
I mean, if we need to, if we absolutely need to, we have all the equipment to move the snow around, so if we have a big pile, we can do that. But most of the snow would be kinda pushed to the end of there, in there.
So if that's the case, if you don't really need that space for snow storage, wouldn't it be more attractive to spread some of those trees out? You've got those, uh, little leaf linders planted really close together, and they're, uh, you know, at, at maturity, they've got a big crown. So instead of gumming them together like that, wouldn't it be more attractive to, there's, there's nothing here that you want us to see.
Yeah, the only thing I don't wanna do is I don't wanna spread them out to the point where you can't see the building.
So you'll be able to see the stems.
Right, but that's, I mean, the whole point of doing this beautiful building is to be able to see it from the road, have it be very attractive. So.
Um, so you've got snow storage shown there next to Route Ten, you've got another section of snow storage shown between the berm and the pre-sold material job surplus area. You've got another area of snow storage shown behind the trailer and equipment parking, so basically against your berm. And, and I know that you, in the winter, move snow around, so must have a good idea that that's adequate, but it seems like you've got sort of conflicting uses.
I mean, yes and no, I mean, we're pretty professional when it comes to snow moving, so it's not like we're clueless and we just push snow in the random spots and take care of stuff, you know, I'm not trying to, like, well, places that we plow are much more difficult to plow.
I was watching some videos last night.
Yeah, I mean, we, we work in some pretty tight spots, and, and the equipment that we have is very, very up to date on plowing. Got a couple plows that are angle and pusher, and, and, um, that's my, that's the least my, it's finding a place to put the snow and, and doing any damage to the landscape, so.
And that equipment for plowing, does that live on the, the sites where you do the plowing, like you've got the contracts?
Yep, we have a yard machine that, that will take care of our job.
So your electric utility is coming from that pole on the corner of Route Ten?
Yeah, so right now, we were planning that would come off of that corner pole, um, that's yet to be decided by every source on, on being. So we, we have a show on where a transformer will be.
You're gonna have an onsite transformer, you mean?
Likely, or it could be a pole mounted, based on what that will give.
Yeah, probably you aren't gonna use that, that much electricity there by the looks of it. So it doesn't show any floor drains in the building, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it looks like the sewer line runs under those apartments there, is that a good idea?
So we came off of the West Street to the end, that would, that would pick up this, and then through the connection, we could pick up the rest of them.
But they run completely underneath one another, correct? Avoiding to the main building, main building and the bathroom, main building there? Any idea of the sign that's gonna be in that front line?
The truck line?
Yeah.
Will, to the building would, would be an eight-inch line.
It'll be an eight-inch.
Yeah, and then there would be a clean out on the exterior, and then by cover, they're gonna have interior clean outs on each unit, each apartment, and then also.
So it's gonna go straight.
Once it goes interior, it'll, it'll bound size to probably four inches.
Four inch underneath those apartments, they're gonna be on a slab, right? Just wondering if that's the best idea, you know, to get a plug up in one of those, it can potentially, you know, back up into the rest of them there, and difficult to clean them out. I'm just a thought, I'm just thinking about that, you know, whether you wanna rethink that or not. It's nothing I don't think to the planning board, it's something you might wanna think about. Another thing you might wanna think about is on that last apartment, about not having your plumbing on the outside wall between those two buildings there, you've got an outside, no, next one, always up to the new building, right there. You've got plumbing on that wall right there, and that's gonna be an outside wall now, because it's gonna be all vacant through there, it's just gonna be a roof over there. Up to you guys, but I'm just saying that you might wanna think about changing the configuration of that floor plan around, so that the back-to-backs on another one.
For that last time, just so it's.
Okay, what else, has the, the, um, Conservation Commission seen newer plans or? They requested that they'd like to see the newer plan.
They are anticipating, they didn't request it, but I indicated that revised plans were coming at their last meeting.
And any other comments on this, and the tree didn't have on that?
Jane, do you recall, I believe, um, you know, they did not have the ability to comment on bulk storage because we didn't have a complete application on the bulk storage of what was proposed until after their meeting. So if they have concerns on the salt storage, for instance, they have not had enough opportunity to weigh in on that yet.
Okay, then I would suggest we probably continue the meeting, when we're done discussing it, continue the meeting till the next, so Conservation Commission has seen revised plans. But we can continue, questions from the board?
Will your site be fully land, uh, fully graded and covered before you start construction? Or is your plan to do sequential construction of the buildings?
Yeah, so, um, the commercial building would likely be done first with this parking, followed directly right afterward with this. That way, residential isn't occupied, have people living as long as this is being built, so the phase would just, it'll be sequential, but construction of the commercial, construction of the residential portion.
So the entire site is going to be graded, uh, paved where it is supposed to be?
Yeah, so really, this detention area and, and the rain garden out back, most of it has to be graded, because that, that will go in first, be stabilized, and then, I suppose, so most of it will be disturbed at one time, drainage going first, stabilized, and then constructing and grading this area out here, constructing the building, the parking lot, followed by this area.
Okay, so the total site will be graded to what would be final before you start building the, uh, the main building, correct?
Correct, and finished pavement, so I guess it'd be some, it'd be graded, subgraded, this area gravel.
I just, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we're not gonna be coming back in after we start and changing, uh, any sort of grading part of that complex. Before, I'm not explaining myself very well, you know. I just wanna make darn sure that everything is done, your, uh, whatever underground work has to be done is done, you're not gonna be digging it up after, etc. So, in that, once you start building, you know, you can continue on without having to bring in and redo things. So that's gonna be, that's the plan.
That's, that's the point.
No, I don't wanna do it.
Yeah, no.
I got a question about tree count.
Yes.
Um, so the, um, the section that abuts the residential area, there's an eight-inch apple. Um, is that included in your tree count, and do you attribute that to this pro, this project?
No, we didn't, because it was onto the budding.
All right, and how about the twenty-four-inch?
We, we included the oak in there, we did not include the. Oh, sorry, yeah, the maple, I know we called it, so, yep, the maple was counted by the birch and the, the other apples.
Okay, so even it's right on the property line, you figure the last.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah, where, where we have it surveyed for the maple is on the abutting property, or so, over hanging in. And then that maple down here, uh, is more on the subject lot, but also crossing into the property.
The apple is for sure on the others. And this is a birch cluster.
Yes, which remains, yes.
So there's, there's one, um, maple that is questionable, right? Is it on your land, is it on their land, but you think it's more on their, this one, then?
This one is more on the subject lot.
On the central. And then the trees that are up in, in this northern corner, are these the trees that counted towards your requirement for parking?
Uh, for frontage.
Okay, so, but don't you show, um.
Based on parking, so there will be three trees.
Three trees, right, so are you counting these for frontage and parking?
Yes, these are counted for frontage and parking, but really for the parking, you're counting the trees that are good. Because these aren't parking spaces out here, I know, it kinda looks like it is, but these are the bulk storage, so those aren't parking.
So your three parking trees are the three linden trees that are?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um, and I.
And we could spread those out, but we would keep them within proximity of the park.
Yeah, so they're spread to forty feet of maturity, so if you got them twelve to fifteen feet apart, they're really gone together.
Yeah, I mean, these circles are also probably fifteen to twenty feet.
If you just scale off the central point, and, you know.
They'd be pretty tight here.
Very, yeah, so, so how do we get, I only get five shade trees? If we don't count the, if we count the, uh, the three lindens towards parking, then we need to have six shade trees, which would be the, the linden up in the northern corner, a pine, and a pine, right, that's your.
Yeah, so our frontage is on both streets, that's how we end up with, with the, we need thirteen and a half.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four. You're not counting the pairs of shade trees, right, that's all done.
Um, well, we might change that out, that's why.
Okay, so, so, but even so, it's not a shade, right? One, two, three.
Well, we counted all, I think, all the trees.
Four.
And all the front, so we had about thirteen total trees.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, I only get eleven, twelve, thirteen, okay, so you're counting the two, the two ones that are in the buffer, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And you understand, um, our, our regulator would be very specific, we call for three-inch caliper trees, and you're specifying two and a half to three-inch caliper, so, um, we need to have three-inch caliper trees.
Okay, so we can remove the two and a half to three.
I'm almost certain almost all the nurseries are getting for three inches, you're getting two and a half. It's just that will become, but we can, we can specify, but if it becomes a two and a half, it's gonna, if they come three, it's gonna say on the label, two and a half, three. So, but, but we can, we can, we can do our best to get three.
Because I know you're interested in, you know, the look.
A hundred percent, yeah, so, I just, I know last year, we did a project with about fifty trees, and we needed three, and what was three was really two and a half, so, but.
Now, would you be willing to substitute that pear tree with something different?
Absolutely, yeah, I was not aware that it's.
It's not indigenous, and we, you know, we, I have a farmer's brother up, and indigenous species, sometimes you get into where there are issues. Japanese knot glue is something that, I hope you don't plan any of that stuff.
Would you have them replaced with? What would we have them replace the pear tree with, so we can get over that?
Yeah, I, I don't.
You have no idea, okay, then it's their choice.
It's your choice.
And, and just another thought, I don't know how much experience you have with those hollies, um, but in this, in our area, they really don't like the winter desiccation, because it's.
Yeah, you can spray it with a wax spray. It's like a, it's a natural wax spray.
That just needs a whole level of maintenance, just saying.
No, I, I, I agree, um, I would say, I would say yes and no to that question, some hollies in certain spots do much better than others. If it's really windy and cold and shady north sides, I would say hollies definitely do much worse in, in New England in the winter, so.
You know, it's your business, if you have the die, it's your problem, fix it right.
Then it would be your business, but, yeah, yeah.
I've not seen them.
Uh, yes, I mean, I, I can agree, um, I'm, I've seen both, but yes.
All right, then, so what we'll probably end up doing is, um, continuing the public hearing to the next meeting to, in order to allow the Conservation Commission to review the plans. So between now and then, is there anything else we would like them to add on to the plan? We've talked about a stockade fence, in addition of that, continuation across, it would be the southern, southerly boundary, I guess, going from east to west.
That's the property line, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that, and, uh, changing up that pear tree, um, I don't know if you can put that on the plans or not, but, you know, you're gonna do that. See, the utilities, you're thinking they're coming from there, um, I know you have to wait for public service, but if you found out between now and then, it'd be better if you put it on the plan, let's see, what else? Oh, yeah, the material and color, extra finishes, if you could just figure out what color you're gonna do it, just stick it on the plan. Let's see, what else have I missed here? You already have your DOT access permit. You have the Swansea access permits, that, or the driveway permit.
Did we get into the staff issues yet? Because they had a list of conditions they wanted to look at.
No, we're reading, we're doing, going through those now, it's on page seven, but we're just seeing what, what we might, uh, want them to have in the plan before we get in there, just so everything is on the plan, so we don't have to make them go again.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good.
Do we need to be concerned with, um, provision for water, that is my West Point, the, the technical condition? That versus a well?
I don't know if it needs to be a condition, because, you know, obviously, they're gonna need water someplace, but if they cannot hook to the water company, then they'll have to be back on site plan to, to show where the well is gonna be, looks to me like they have plenty of property there to put a well at seventy-five foot radius on it, there, but they would have to come back in, and they wouldn't be able to get a CO anyways without water.
There's fire suppression recommended to your partners.
Right, fire suppression would be on the apartments only, on commercials.
And what is that exactly, is that just supplied by what's one to water company?
So very unlikely that they'll have enough pressure and capacity for fire suppression. So we're waiting to hear is, do we have enough for the domestic water, just that, when they do weld, and then we put in a fire system like we've done on other projects in town, so there'd be an underground tank, um, we discussed, um, this portion here where the water line comes in near the setback, even the sidewalk would be roughly, we're basically get fire truck to pull in, connect to that, and you'd have a pump for fire suppression.
Would you add that into the site plan, even if you don't put it in, because it sounds like.
We could show an outline of where.
Yeah, put it in more, that would be. Let's see, anything else there, I think.
Spreading out the linden trees.
That's what, adjusting the, uh, the cluster of trees in the front, is what you're talking about?
Right here, so, next to each other.
What is that exactly gonna be?
Um, give them enough room so that they, if they're gonna be, um, forty foot mat, mature, or break the crown, give them more space.
So you just wanna?
Just.
We'll spread it out, we'll spread it out.
Mr. Jett, is there anything that you would like us to ask? Anybody else have any?
Do you wanna open up to the public now while we're there?
Sorry, thanks for the reminder, yes, any question from the public, I know we're gonna continue, but yeah, you're contemplating any questions of the. Sorry, thanks for reminding me, yes, any question from the public, I know we're gonna continue, but yeah, you're contemplating any questions of the applicant from the public. I guess not, but. Just identify yourself for the record.
Rust, Rustle, I live at seventy-five West Street. I, I, I talked, you know, I know John, you talked about the berm and the tree lot and everything, so, two-foot berm, six-foot trees, eight-foot tall, how tall is the salt shed?
So the trees are gonna grow a little taller than that, which is, uh, salt shed is, I don't have an answer for you on that right now, um, the salt shed we're probably looking at, I don't know. Fourteen feet high, maybe twelve?
I mean, we look out across the field, and if you're gonna buffer it.
Yeah.
They just don't, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, I plan on having it wood sided all the way down, so it will look like a shed.
And then you're gonna run, obviously, I heard your hours of operation, but you're still gonna run your commercial stuff whenever it snows, right?
Yeah, we're kind of like, we're just.
Correct, I understand what you do.
We, we get rid of the backup person.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, with that comment, would you mind putting the height of that salt shed on the site plan? Anybody else? Anybody else in the public? If not, then motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
So moved, May eleventh.
Next meeting on May eleventh, okay, motion by Mike to continue our public hearing to May eleventh, seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the same, aye, aye, all those opposed? Okay, we'll see you back here on the eleventh. Next up is our site plan review regulations, and we're looking at parking. Larger parking, basically, we're looking at parking, last time, we pretty much had everything else situated there, and. Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna discuss this, so what do we have on that?
This is going back into something else.
Page, what page do you?
There isn't a page.
Oh, that's, that's the one we got last?
The last, our last.
Oh, that's different. Part of that. That would be on here? Were these ten eleven?
It's like a handout from Victoria.
That's Victoria's handout, and we're, we're using that as a checklist, basically, to see if we got everything covered, if it worked.
And I didn't know whether or not we're, that we left those as individually marked in our review of the plan, because looking at these.
Well, those are purposes, I'm, it's under the big heading, Victoria just, just separated it out, that was in that giant long paragraph we had in the beginning for the purpose of the regulations, that's actually not a regulation, it's the purpose of them. Regulations that regulate those subjects are what have teeth to them, you know, this, it says a purpose to require suitably located streets of sufficient, that's the one you're talking about, right? Efficient with, to accommodate existing and direct traffic.
She's broken it into two, two different items, it doesn't need to be, it's all on the D under the regulations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, but, um.
I mean, my, my only question was, when we're constructing this, are we separating that D out into two different items?
No, I don't think so, again, Victoria just broke this down. As what was in, that's exactly what, what is in our, the beginning, you know, the purpose of our, that is in that giant. But again, we have to vote on whether we want to use that, I had suggested at the last meeting that we use what Victoria wrote in the beginning because of, because of our zoning regulations, it has just a paragraph of the purpose, and our zoning regulations are like that thick. And we don't list all those purposes out, we just wanted to make sure that we had everything in there. But, you know, our purpose in these are just a small little paragraph, and Victoria had written, yeah, it's just a small paragraph like that, that's the purpose of our zoning regulations, just a general purpose, and she had written in that same handout that we had, and I'll just read it. The purpose of these site plan review regulations is to provide for the safe and attractive development of the town of Swansea, and to generally create conditions within the town of Swansea favorable for health, safety, convenience, and prosperity. That says it, I think, right there, as far as the purpose of our.
Subcategory.
Yeah. But these, I'm thinking anyways, I might be wrong, that these would not be there, all these one through, um, I think they're nineteen pieces would not be in there, uh, they're in the regulations, but they just would not be in the purpose anymore, because they're actually in the regulations as to what is required for those.
Can I ask a question about this? So I've got one copy of what was in the packet this week of this, and I believe Victoria's nineteen, we'll call them her nineteen pieces, it's breaking up a large, a very large paragraph that, that does still exist, because we just have not yet determined to remove it or change it. But we're using Victoria's list as checklist while we're in this process?
Yep, that's what we talked about in the last meeting to make sure that covered, but.
They're all there still.
They are all there.
They're just in a paragraph form rather than bullets.
Okay, so if we were to suggest moving, removing that, would we just say the purpose reference to six, uh, six seventy-four forty-four? And leave it at that, because that covers everything, but.
It does, I like what Victoria wrote, really, it's a, it's just a general purpose of the regulations is what we're trying to accomplish in town Swansea, I'm just nice and pleasing.
You know, we, we need to, the things we need to cite.
Well, that, I think, I don't have in front of me, I could, but I think that one you're citing says that all those things can be contained in the site plan review regulations, I think that's what they're talking about, those are the things they allow us to regulate. And we don't necessarily have to say that the state allows us to regulate all these things, as long as we don't overstep our bounds and try and regulate things we aren't supposed to. With just a small paragraph of the purpose, and making sure that we have all those things, which we are pretty sure we do, in our regulations, we don't need that whole giant paragraph that Sarah was holding up there, we just need what, we just need what, what Victoria wrote right there. And for the purpose, and then we move on to the regulations, just citing the regulations.
And then to, to continue that idea, number one, when we talk about harmony and aesthetics, that is the opening statement that I inserted in the section where we talk about landscaping and screening, okay? So it's just, no, it's moving that sentence from where it used to be in the, in the monster paragraph to the beginning of this other section.
And it's there, yeah.
And actually, I did, I, that was the source of number one, which is harmonious and aesthetic development, and number two, to provide for open spaces and green spaces of adequate proportion, both of those were listed in the monster paragraph. I just picked them up and got them to, yeah.
And I think they're all covered throughout, you follow, I am confused, you, you follow what, what my presenting is there, Richard?
Yeah, I, I understand your reasoning, but I just, I just want to be sure that we're, we're not rewriting the statute.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, we can't, can't do that, but yeah, I don't think we are, because we aren't overstepping our bounds, I think everything in our regulations, we're allowed to do under six seventy-four, I guess it is.
Yeah.
Just before we get to the parking area, just have one little dog ear or something over there. Yeah, we have a couple, just a couple of things, you know, we have that new part that we put in there that, that, I'll just start it off here, it says, if after review and comment by the Conservation Commission, planning board determines that the potential damage to an underlying affector, this is on page eight. Agrofore or wet hypertension area would result from the proposed use, and following initial items may be required by the planning board, and we go on to say a bunch of stuff there. Number three, uh, says stormwater management and pollution prevention plans to include, but I think I'd like to change that, even though those are my wording, but I think it ought to be changed to say stormwater management and pollution prevention plans, including but not limited to, because we may ask for more, we had to put them there. So, if we just drop the two, so it reads prevention plans, including but not limited to. And then on page nine, this goes along with page twenty. On page twenty, under pollution control, control, we have under specific standards, and it repeats that same exact paragraph, it's after review and comment by the Conservation Commission, you know, on and on and on, planning board, planning board, then we have I and approved plan for blasting activities. I think we should cross out that B, specific standards, take that I of the approved, that whole little paragraph of blasting activities, and move it to page nine, under G, as a new H. Because that, it was underneath that paragraph, after review by the comment by the, and comment by the Conservation, Conservation Commission. That paragraph is already there, so this is just listed as one of the items that the planning board may institute, or may have a applicant bring in, if they think that blasting is gonna hurt the affector or something, or a wet hypertension area.
See, this section?
Yeah, it's, that I should move it to page nine, and as its new section H, right under the G, and then just cross out this one, the redundant one right there.
Well, that's on page twenty.
That B on page twenty, because we already have it there. And other than the parking, that was it at all that I had. Anybody else?
That statement, we're just moving on.
That's page twenty, yeah, yeah, removing, uh, removing B on that pollution control, removing B, because that's the same exact paragraph that we have on page nine, or taking I and moving it as its new paragraph H underneath that category. So, parking, now, we're, we spend a lot of time on parking here, and landscaping the parking lots, and then on and on with it. We are probably gonna see very few parking lots that we're talking about, giant parking lots there, and I only, I only say that because an industry or a building like that, they require, of course, the water from water company for fire protection, which we don't have over here, Swansea Water Company doesn't do that, they may put in systems, I suppose, but can and cannot require sewer, which is minimally on Route ten there. And on Route twelve, the same thing, there is some water up Route twelve goes up to the new page place, it goes as far as down Route twelve, the sewer goes that far as well, but there aren't too many big areas that are gonna be developed until like a three hundred some odd odd parking lot, big businesses. We still need it in the zoning, but I'm just saying, we spent a lot of time on this, and we may never use it, so we might as well nail it down tonight, figure out what we're gonna do. Yeah, that's fair, what we gotta do.
The only big parking lots I can foresee ever is probably an industrial area, maybe if a plant comes and builds a big plant, where they could have a large parking lot for employees.
In order for that to happen, they need fire protection, they don't have it.
They don't have it.
Not on Route ten here, maybe, I don't know about the water.
I'm talking about the, uh, I'm talking about over by the fairgrounds, our industrial area.
You can get your park it there.
Yeah, that's probably where a manufacturer comes to town, that's where he's gonna wanna go.
Um, could I interject?
Yes, you can.
We may be seeing an application for site plan review for where, where the fun park is right now, and you don't know how large the parking lot will be for that, I only have an idea of how large the building will be, so, but that will probably be coming before you, before the summer is over, I anticipate, so, I just wanna, I don't want you to say, we may never need this. Right now.
So they actually changed their mind on where they wanted to go.
They're in the process of changing their mind, nothing is.
Yeah, we don't wanna approve something that we don't like, obviously, but we just wanna make sure that we can just nail it down and move on, um, with the best that we can come up with, we've been working on it for a while, we've all been looking at parking spaces, I think, or parking lots of key, and, and on and on, we've looked at the one, I've got those plans still here from Market Basket.
See, but I, I feel, in my own fault, I feel to go out to like, uh, medical place out there on, on Route nine to check for, if we did have something come in, what would we wanna do for parking? We, we kinda have to have that in back of our minds, too, I'll write something about that, just in case.
I think you've lost me for a minute.
Well, I'm talking about the large parking lots that we're talking about for industrial use.
Well, we, we can tier them into, it's a different tier, we can tier them into like, um, fifty to a hundred, a hundred to two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty beyond, and like that, Sarah and I were talking about earlier in the week, about the green space, which is what we're having trouble with inside the parking areas there, what it's based on. And, uh, we were wondering if, if you could just take the square footage of the total parking spaces, or just the number of spaces themselves, and use that as a formula for the green space inside, then there'd be no question as to what is used for the square footage, whether it's this part of the parking lot, that part of the parking lot, if you have two hundred spaces, then it's X amount of green space with inside, or if you have fifty spaces, it's X amount, you know, something like that.
That has some merit, because it's gonna make it easier for the engineering people when they, when they do the parking lot together, they're gonna have a better idea.
Yeah, there's, there's no leeway there, you know, if you have that many parking spaces, then you have to have that amount, X amount of whatever it is.
Right.
Green space inside.
You wanna break it out between retail and residential?
I don't know, because a parking space is a parking system, what we're trying to do is keep a large parking space from looking like a large parking space.
Right.
But we've heard comments of people, you know, like multifamily apartment houses, that the marketing space is better for that.
Yeah.
Like if they're, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Even if it is a park.
Definitely so, yeah.
So, but a retail space, you know, a market basket.
Yeah.
They're gonna probably dictate how much parking they need, and then a manufacturer, you know.
Be basically some employee.
We tell them how much, you know, in our regulations, we tell them how much they need for each, each use, like that, you know, Market Basket or multifamily or whichever. But, again, the planning board can waive things, you know, the planning board can look at each one individually, if that doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, but as something to go by guidelines or standard, we have to come up with.
But the slice point there, maybe it's good to write a, um, different parking regulations for different areas, like, you got one for commercial and industrial, and then one for the mixed use, like we're talking about tonight, it might make sense.
That does have merit, you know, to do that, I would think, especially, yeah, industrial, especially up the industrial park there, which you can't really see from anywhere, pretty much, you know, parking area there might not be such an ISO, it's one right out on Route ten or twelve.
Then you get into a question, okay, you mentioned mixed use. I'll give you a second, you're basing on, parking is based on square footage, so if you've got so many square feet of industrial or commercial, and so many square feet of residential. You put the parking, um, based on each use, or based on total use, or?
Based on each use, but, you know, you, you're talking about putting the parking landscaping, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And right, yeah, that's, uh, maybe, maybe it would be best, best to use just.
And parking would be by residential unit, you know, multifamily.
As what's required.
Right, but as far as an industrial, again, I think whoever's proposing the industrial is gonna know how many people they need to work.
Yeah.
You know, they might not need.
Right.
As many people as we might expect.
They can go on, you know, we can give them a reduction, right, if we have a zoning, we can do that.
Well, you, you take the example over there in Hillsboro, the plant I used to run, eight hundred and fifty employees, so you know how many, three, three shifts it costs, but you know, there's like two hundred and fifty to three hundred in each shift, you have to have less landscaping on something like that, just to get the parking spaces in.
Keep the parking lot down to a minimal size, but that's a correct thing.
Because you don't wanna pave over every square inch of land.
Well, yeah, you, you require more green space, and the parking lot gets bigger.
Yeah.
Like that, so.
So in a way differentiate between the industrial manufacturing and the, uh, not residential, but the mixed use and commercial, residential, like here. commercial residential like here.
We probably shouldn't have too many categories, you know, maybe.
Two, I would say two would be enough. I would say two.
Commercial, industrial, and the other for the rest.
Right, yeah.
But we haven't even figured out one yet. So, you know, we got to get one down, figure out what we're going to use, what are we going to base it on. Back to that parking space there, I ran calculation on Market Basket stuff there. We're all familiar with that, you know what that looks like, as to what it would look like, you know, how would they meet the requirements with the number of spaces they have. And it doesn't come out, does not work. It's too little green space they would have to have with the number of parking spaces they have up there. But if we assign a square footage per parking space for lots, that would work. We'll say lots up to, I wrote that down, so I'll load it down someplace. So I did calculations as to how that would work. And if we had lots from fifty to a hundred spaces, if we required ten, ten square feet of internal green space per parking space, that would be up to about the five or seven percent that we're looking at in Market Basket. Wouldn't be the ten percent that we've had in our, our regulations now, but I think we all probably figured that that's kind of unreasonable. It's, it's too much, that ten percent. You can't make that bigger. But if we did that, if we used parking space, if we did that, this would work. Fifty to a hundred spaces, ten square feet of internal green space per space.
Would they think the parking space is smaller?
They can't. We have a minimum size. We have a hundred and sixty-two square feet. That's all we have.
It's feasible.
And say a hundred to two hundred and fifty spaces, we'd use fifteen square feet per space. And then two hundred and fifty plus, we use twenty square feet per space. And then that would be calculated to use for the internal green spaces, which consists of those divider rows that we're talking about and the end caps that we're talking about.
So we would not, like, so I was in Home Depot all the time recently, and they've got those linear dividers every four rows, and it looks nice.
Yeah, four rows. I was, yeah, over at Price Shopper over there, too. They've got, let's see, I think in front of their store, it's, it's one, yeah, it's four rows, yeah, every four rows, and that's pretty nice. That looks pretty good.
So we've got it in, in your version, Scott's version, we've got one linear divider, I should be, for every six parking rows, do you change that to four?
Yeah, I had already penciled in, I think, it to four, but yeah, I think you're right. Four, four would be better. And they also have, I don't know if you noticed, they also have their trees every three parking spaces, which probably is about thirty feet. It's a little less than thirty feet, but something like that. And that's pretty good spacing from, you know, if you can stand up and look at it rather than on the drawing, over in the parking lot, that's.
And that's what you were proposing that as well.
We were proposing not more than thirty feet.
Yeah. Do you want to change that to every three parking spaces instead of thirty feet?
Let's leave it at the thirty feet, because that's about what that is. Yeah, so let's leave it at that. And also, let's see, the, we had the dividers, the linear dividers there, at least ten feet wide I had on there. So I measured the ones over by Home Depot. I measured the ones over by, where was it now? The other grocery store I came, Panaford, yeah, and Price Shopper. So Price Shopper has the nicest one that seems there. And those are nine feet, including the granite curb. So their green part is probably about eight feet. They've got granite, so it's about nine feet there. And that looked pretty good, so.
And it's adequate for.
It is, yeah. Trees are fun, yeah. Seem pretty good. So we could use nine feet in there, and that would keep the parking lot literally tiny, a bit smaller, maybe, and still have the green space in there. So change that to nine. And let's see. And what else? Let's see. I think I also penciled in, it was up on the beginning part of it, a minimum of one tree, three inch diameter, is required for every five parking spaces along the perimeter of the parking area where parking space is provided. Or, and I penciled in here, or space thirty feet apart of our parking lot. I mean, parking is not provided. So.
So that's the.
Yeah, but, but there's a flaw in that, you know, what if the parking spaces go not perpendicular to that green space, but if they go parallel with it, then you've got real space trees, you know, because parking space is a lot wider than it is, or a lot longer than it is wide. So we might have to put, or we might want to put the thirty foot one on there instead of the five parking spaces there. That was, that was way to right from top there. And every five parking spaces, we might want to put just thirty feet, just like we have in the others. They could do it the other way, and it looked a little bit. So what are we going to do? Again, we have, it seems to be the standard is about twenty cars for a row. And like Victoria was saying, over in Home Depot and that other parking lot there, there are one, two, three, four rows, and then a divider spot. That looked like a pretty good layout. So if we have one of their, there's a section, I measured over there, there's a section there, has the two, four, six, has eighty cars in it. That does not have a center divider. That has two outside rows of cars and a double row of cars in there. So that'd be an eighty foot, I mean, eighty parking space there. So if we use the fifty, you know, fifty parking spaces to a hundred parking spaces for the ten square feet of internal green, that would work in a parking lot like that with the two end caps on that centerpiece, if you follow what I mean. Centerpiece has the double row cars there and an end cap on either one there, green space end cap on either one, and has two outside rows. So that was all they had, just the cars there. That would work for that parking lot as well.
Should you add a provision for, you know, whichever is greater for, for the interior green space? So for instance, if, if then you're, let's say it's just a, an eighty, an eighty space parking lot, and so you don't have to have those linear islands on the outside, because that would be perimeter parking.
It would be, yeah.
Um, then you would be losing that island space as interior green space.
I'm just saying that for that calculation, for just calculation, calculating this for the interior green space.
Oh, okay.
I'm just assuming that those would be perimeter, perimeter spots, not the island. Yeah, I didn't explain that properly, but it would work. And we'd still have interior green space in that parking lot if these were just the perimeter, not those little island we're talking about, divider islands, and you had a T stop, T stop that we require in our zoning ordinance anyways, at the end of those. Would, would you, you know. Look at that parking lot out there. Visualize that that's the only parking lot there. It still works visually. It looks pretty decent with the trees and how they've got a space out and stuff. We want to go with, you know, for the green space, again, it's the green space is what we're being held up on, I think. Do we want to go with a space, you know, a square foot per space, or do we want to go back to a calculating, calculation of the entire parking lot itself for percentage wise, green space? We did that at four, and that works out to between five percent and seven percent. If you use a flat rate, we'll say parking space, then it looks up to a square footage per space. What sounds best, Dan, buddy? Jane, what sounds best to you? You look like you're pulling on sleepover right now.
I, I don't know. My eyes are bothering. My eyes are real bothering me. But I just had a crazy idea, that's why. What purpose of the green space? Is it for breathing, or is it for look?
I think it's for looks, you know, looks as well. It gives a little bit of shade, but it's for a place to plant some trees, so you don't have a giant.
So not applied to anything we've talked about in any of our plans or buildings, but I'm thinking if I were going to design a parking lot for a retail complex, I'd like to see green space in front of the retail, you know, you would have to walk on a sidewalk between green over here and green over there. And if you have to have X percentage of green space, why does it have to be bordered by cars? Why can't you just plop it right in the middle? Or wherever you want.
A giant island or something.
And just for a look, yeah. That's what I've been sitting here thinking. Well, gee, then the disadvantage would be that people would turn it into a dog park, or they'd tell their kids to play in it while they went in the store or something crazy. That might be a problem. But I'm thinking if it's so, we have green space to look good, why can't it be along the public way and where the public goes into the building? Like at Market Basket, yes, you have green areas, but they're out there with people parked all around them. So what? And they're not grassy, really. They have some scraggly trees and lilies. They used to have lilies. I think they've kind of dissipated. But if you require a place to have green space, why not make it a noticeable green space and make it great?
Maybe a little sharp island there on, not an island, but a little three foot path probably next to the building.
Where?
On the next side of Market Basket.
It's the place where plants go to die, you know. Notice everything that's in there dies. Oh, you mean where you get, if you get a parking space on the end?
No, right in front of the building. You know where the bakery is? It's like a three, on the other wall of the bakery.
Yeah, along the wall. You don't walk on, you don't walk on.
The sidewalk right there.
This, yeah, you walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I try not to get scratched by the little boxwoods.
But the other thing is that the sun hits it, and I think that's why it kills those trees. There's just no way they can, you know. It's like a, yeah.
They probably don't get watered very well either, so.
They have a water.
Um, no, I'm thinking someplace where I went once many years ago. I got out of the car, my husband drove to park the car, but the way went in front of the store, and then there were trees and, and shrubs in front of the store and walkways through them. And then the parking lot was just cars.
And that wasn't, I mean, that was okay.
Well, yeah, you know.
Well, that's a possibility.
So you may have it out, it's X percentage.
And have it right there in front of the building. Require what, ten feet now? I think it was ten feet on the public access side of the building.
You're a crapper, Bill.
I didn't hear that.
The, the purpose of breaking up the parking lot is for studies.
It is.
That's what I was wondering.
You don't want to really bother the front of the building, because you want people to be able to see who it is that's there. You know, if they have some sort of a showroom across the front, they might be able to see what's there.
It would depend on who, you know, what the building was purposed for.
Depending on, depending on the store, a lot of stores like, for instance, supermarkets, have these great big sales signs in the windows. And if you've got the landscaping for it, are you hiding those sales signs?
No. No, not according to my drawing. I have.
That's implemented wrong.
You got to hit that.
And you would drive right by the store between the green space and the store. You, and you could have the green space there, and there could be a drive through there if you wanted, or you drive on the other side of the green space. But you might take up some of the parking capacity. That would be the only thing.
Well, if you didn't have a green space in the parking lot, then you wouldn't be training it off.
It wouldn't be taken up.
Yeah, right.
So what's your thoughts? Green interior or no green interior parking lot? Yes or no? We're going to decide this one right now.
I like green interior. I think it looks better. That's opinion.
So doing your calculations for, you know, the five, seven percent or whatever it came out to be, I think would be fine, and maybe leave it up to the type of store. You know, if a store wanted to have a green space in the front and a solid.
That they could.
Parking lot.
Yeah, we could waive the.
We allow them to take the interior and move it to the interior, meaning between the building and the parking.
Depend, depend.
No, interior.
Interior or no interior green space?
No, interior, but I'm trying to think. Do we, do we require the actual placement?
No, we let them lay it out.
Yeah, that's right.
So we can do the percentages.
Right.
Can do that, yeah.
And then they can configure.
And they'd have to make it safe, so if they're going around corners.
No, I'd prefer the interior.
I like the interior, and among other things, it provides a place to walk without a car backing into you. Where is.
Oh, you're walking, you're talking about walking on the interior or landscaping thing?
Yeah.
I suppose that.
Where they have a center. Walkway between the.
Yeah, it does, does give you that. Victoria?
Interior, because I like the relief from the heat, you know, that the pavement is setting up.
Okay.
I think that's much more pleasant.
I'm for the interior as well. Sorry, Jane.
No, that's, you're not needed. It's, it's.
It is, and if they wanted to do something like that, yeah, they could easily come in.
I'm not taking the green space out of it.
Okay, so let's nail something else down. Is it a percentage that we use and let them calculate it with the square footage of the parking area? Or do we require a, you know, twenty or ten square feet per parking space? Do we do it by per space, or do we do it by square footage of the parking area? We've always done it by square footage of the entire parking area. But sometimes it's in dispute as to exactly what you can use to calculate that, you know, that's the thing. And also, the travel lanes, we require, that's another thing. It's twenty-two feet minimum we require, but twenty-four feet is a standard between, you know, lanes in those parking areas there. Twenty-two feet is kind of, kind of small. We might want to go to twenty-four. But getting back to the square footage, what do we do? Do we use the percentage and it works out to, I have on those drawings, but it works out to about five percent green space for a parking lot with, I think, around a hundred cars in it, up to a hundred cars, something like that. And then over a hundred, it works out to about seven percent green space. And that's of the square footage area. Jane, what do you think we should do?
I have no idea. Whatever, whatever you do, it'll be contested.
Yeah, you're right. But that's what we're here for, you know, we can grant waiver and stuff. Mike?
I think it'll make it simple for them to do the calculations, that by, by the parking space is, is easier for them to get in than it is doing the whole thing.
It's to the same.
Right, it'll amount to the same, but yeah, it'd be easier for them that, because we know what the problem we have with the last one here. Trying to calculate it out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Went back and forth on that.
We did, right, yeah.
So.
Sorry, you and Mike, Richard.
You're referencing the airport thing?
Yeah, the one we went back and forth and.
As to the calculation that you.
Yeah.
You wanted the seven percent.
We could do either.
No, isn't that how it worked out?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It was, it was something to do with what they could include in the interior green. Yeah, they were using some of the corner ones, and we allowed other contractors to use before. But yeah, we need to nail that then, exactly what they can use, what they can't use. I suppose, yeah, parking space per space would eliminate that, I suppose. Richard, what do you think?
I don't know if we, if we use a specific number to dictate what we're restricting versus just taking a percentage of the size.
It amounts to the same thing.
It will, but I think this gives us, or gives them more flexibility.
To, to find a hole in it, to find loophole.
Well, it's like a little hole.
Not every parking lot is a perfect rectangle or square or whatever.
You're right.
But I think that you've got to take a percentage of the entire parking lot area, including the travel lanes.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what we've had, do before, yeah, including travel lanes. That's why the two calculations did not come out, parking spaces versus the square footage, when I calculated them out on the Market Basket one, because the parking lanes had been included in that square footage. Which they would be in any square footage if we're going to do it. Total area would be. Victoria?
Um, I don't, I guess I'm reluctant to have different requirements for different sized parking lots. So I think we should have one percent, five percent or seven percent internal green space should be the requirement. And I would, for the seven percent myself, I think what we see sometimes is people taking properties, parcels that are really too small to do what they would like to do on it. And I, you know, it's not our fault if they can't, if their building is, what, what they're. Um, and I, you know, it's not our fault if they can't, if their building is, what, what they're proposing to build is oversized, therefore requiring too much parking, you know, if they just might need to scale it back to accomplish what we would like to accomplish in terms of landscaping and screening. So I think seven percent, and I think, although I like the concept of, of keying it into the number of parking spaces, I am a little worried about not accommodating for the travel lanes.
Well, we, in our regulations, we do have travel lane requirements in there. And like I said, ours is twenty-two feet, which should be twenty-four, I think, but twenty-two. They have to have travel lanes in there. So that wouldn't be, there, it wouldn't be a problem.
But you were talking about keying it off of the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, using that rather than, than a square footage, so we'd know, or whoever was designing, engineer would know exactly how much they had to have in there.
That seems clever, but I don't know what the percentage should be because I would like to end up with seven percent of parking.
Well, that's, those are the calculations. And I came up with seven percent on calculations, on real-time calculations on the Market Basket one, and I think it was also, uh, might have been that Price Chopper one. And the reason for two tiers, meaning the lower parking spaces as opposed to the higher number of parking spaces requiring more, is that the, up to a hundred spaces, you can't really fit in interior. You know, and if you do have to fit it in, the parking lot has to get bigger. You know, you still have your home spaces, but you require them to have this, you know, section inside there, push out the parking space, so.
Well, what you're doing too with, with increasing the perimeter trees, you know, I mean, that's, that's a big change for us. To require one tree every thirty feet on the perimeter. I think that could offset.
Could offset the visual form, but again, I'm, I'm coming down to, you know, you're talking about the seven percent as opposed to the five percent. When you apply the seven percent to, we'll say, a hundred car parking lot, it, it doesn't work. You have to expand that parking lot to accommodate that seven percent in there. If you use the five percent, you can do it with, um, with the end caps, like I was showing you before. And the other thing, that will accommodate their green space, those end caps that we require them to have anyway. So that was why the two different tiers.
Okay.
I'm not saying one's right or they are not, I'm just saying that's why that was.
Well, we've got to test it, right? I'm so glad you did this calculation.
Well, yeah.
We don't have to work.
See if it fits or not.
Draw it out.
Similar fits, yeah.
I have a question.
Sorry, I think Cameron's gonna say.
Well, well, didn't we last time talk about considering the size of the parking lot and having percentage of green space be harmonious with the size of the parking lot? So if you had, as you were just saying, a hundred car parking lot, you wouldn't want to have to expand the size of the parking lot to accommodate the seven percent. So why can't you have a ratio between the size of parking lot and the, and the.
And the greens.
Area of green space. I suppose it's still.
That percentage is a ratio, yeah.
Yeah.
And also the number of parking spaces is a ratio. It's just putting it two different ways. We just have to decide which one we're gonna use and, and stick with one, and we can change it if we're wrong, you know.
Why don't we should go for the seven?
Seven across the board or seven? It doesn't fit in a smaller parking lot. You can draw it on paper there. It doesn't work, uh, you know. And we can do, whatever the board wants to do, we'll do. We'll put it in our regulations. We've spent too much time on this already. And I'm just saying that, looking at it on paper.
Let's park.
It doesn't fit. So, yeah, let's park it. What are we gonna do? Seven percent or five percent?
Seven.
Seven.
Sorry, five. Richard? Five.
Seven on a parking lot over a certain size. Five if it's.
Okay, let's.
Five if it's less than whatever that size is that we decided.
Let me re, let me rephrase the question now. I think we ought to get this one decided first. Are we gonna have two different, um, requirements for different sized parking lots? We'll say up to a hundred one size, because actually up to fifty, we can't put anything in there. It ought to start at fifty, I think. I don't know if you guys agree, but anyways, should we have a difference between a hundred lot, parking lot, and a, uh, and a, say, two hundred or three hundred?
If you take a Grimaldi's parking lot.
Yeah.
And you were to build that building today, and you require solar green space interior.
Yeah.
You can lose most of the parking, which is why over, over fifty parking spots or whatever the magic number is.
I think it ought to start at fifty, something like that.
Yeah.
Because it, it gets too small there, but fifty to a hundred.
Yeah.
Let's, let's put it this way then, fifty to a hundred at five percent, over a hundred at seven percent. Yes or no?
I think that's what I.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yep.
Okay, okay, so we have, we have fifty to a hundred parking spaces, five percent green space.
Five percent interior.
Interior green space, thank you, yeah. And anything over a hundred parking spaces, we have seven percent interior green space. At least, yeah. This is, this is, because we don't do residential, well, we do residential use like multi-family, but we don't do.
Residential area.
This is every, all of our parks.
You were mentioning up in the industrial park.
Yeah.
A couple of buildings have set back. You can't see them.
You can't.
Why, why do they need to have?
They probably don't, but they can always ask us for a waiver. You know, we can look at the plans. We can suggest things too, you know. If there's, it looks like they're expanding way out that they shouldn't have to, and we could eliminate some of that with a green space that you could suggest.
Safety reasons from, from people wanting from their car to the building.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, it's, it's spitting you development to the size of the property. If they don't have room for it, they shouldn't be building that.
Yeah, then they can't.
Get straightened out.
So.
That's what the green space is.
Something that doesn't exactly inform this, but just food for thought with zoning amendments and such moving forward. In the industrial park district, and it's the only district where you guys have impervious surface limitations. And so if you were to add that into maybe the business district, it would reduce having, um, a development that's really developing every square inch of a property, which I think a lot of this discussion about interior green space in the parking lot is meant to prevent the overdevelopment of parcels. And there are, there are ways to just address that head-on by including limitations on impervious surface.
There you go.
So I'm just adding that for, yeah, to consider downward.
Good idea.
And then you get, um, sometimes you need green space with a place where people want to live. You need green space to be provided anywhere. You wouldn't want to live in a place that had a parking lot with just parking lot.
Look at the Lego building going up the next Grimaldi's.
Please don't make me look at, oh, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, you don't have to go down to their post office every day like we do.
No, I don't.
Where are the, the, the impervious surface limitation? That would be in a, so.
It's in the zoning ordinance in the industrial park district. There are very, very different setback restrictions and impervious surface.
So we've got fifty to a hundred spaces, five percent, over a hundred, seven percent internal spaces, I mean, internal green space. Let's see, anything else we decide? We, we put two other things in there. So let me, let me read this over. This is what I had suggested to the board and I was on the last one about the landscaping parking area. It just pretty much says what things are in there. And you want me to just read the thing? Cause I'll do that. And we had changed more than everybody. It says, parking areas shall be, and we took the word out effectively, and Victoria put it in a different spot. Parking area shall be landscaped with trees and shrubs to effectively reduce the visual impact of glare headlights and parking lot lights from the public driveway and from adjacent properties. Then we have number two, a minimum of one tree, three-inch diameter is required for every, and we had five on there. We're putting thirty feet on there, I think, right? Thirty feet of, uh, every thirty feet, so we'll get the parking spaces there along, along the perimeter of the parking area or parking spaces provided. We don't have to have that three, just along the perimeter of the parking area. Right? Okay, knocking that out. Now, we get to planting islands, which is what we're talking about, the interior. Planting islands consisting of linear divider islands running parallel to parking rows. And terminal islands at the ends of parking rows should be used on the interior of the parking area to define vehicular, vehicular and pedestrian circulation patterns and to break up large expanses of pavement. Islands should be, uh, should include trees and be planted with either grass or evergreen shelves. Then we have one linear divider island shall be provided for every, and we changed that to four parking rows. They should be at least ten feet wide. We changed that to nine feet wide. And with trees planted no more than thirty feet apart and at least four feet from curb in all directions. Then we have terminal islands should be provided at the ends of parking rows at least every twenty spaces, which seems to be the norm, twenty spaces. They don't go beyond that usually. And contain one tree for islands terminating a single row of spaces and two trees for islands terminating a double row of parking spaces. Number four, the total square footage of the parking area shall be used to calculate the landscape open space requirement for the interior of the parking area and shall apply to the linear divider and terminal islands. So.
Or for, or we just.
Pretty much what we're talking about, uh, we have parking lots for, let's see, up to a hundred, I think, is what we just said, isn't it?
Fifty to one.
Of fifty to a hundred, hundred total spaces. The interior landscape open shall be five percent or more of the total parking area. Parking lots over, we changed that to one hundred, one hundred total spaces. Interior landscape open space shall be seven percent or more of the total parking area.
Should we say fifty to ninety-nine?
Whereabouts is that? Oh, fifty to ninety-nine in the, uh, okay, yeah, yeah, it's just to.
Four, hundred to one.
Yeah.
Whichever.
Yeah, let's, let's go to a hundred and then one-on-one. And then one-on-one on up. So, does that nail?
Yes.
In light of Mr. Ossers' comment, should we change that to three-inch, five-inch, or three-inch one?
Now, let's leave it at three because, yeah, I don't know. I'm sure you can get.
Three inch here.
Three inch, yeah. Yeah, it will be three inches here.
They're gonna grow, so.
I think we ought to leave it at three. We use three in there or four. And also, yeah, if it's two and a half, then it probably is two and a half, like Richard was saying, the two-by-four, you know. Supposedly two-by-fours, no. So, but I always, well, what's the rest of the board think? I would say leave it at three. Anyone else?
Maybe two.
Three.
We have to leave it at three because you know what? If he puts two and a half in, who's gonna go measure them?
Well, we say two and a half, then he says, well, you can only get them two inches.
Yeah, so we leave it at three.
Okay.
Could I just.
Yeah.
A point of clarification, um, percent of total parking area. So I feel like we need to define what the total parking area is, whether it includes, um, interior access, the access to the street, or if it's exclusively the area of the parking spaces. Isn't that, from my position.
Including driving lanes or access lanes.
Including driving lanes and access to the street.
Yeah, but again, that goes up to the street, you know, the, I wonder if we ought to work in just a per space in there or is that?
I think we're referencing the fifty to a hundred, a hundred and one and up.
Use the spaces themselves.
Why not use the, as a definition, the edge, the outer edge of the parking area? Be it from, we're going across the front of the building, but where the parking actually starts to the, let's say, left-hand side, to the back side, to the right-hand side. Calculating that as your square footage.
Curve face to curve face.
Basically, yes.
It still is up for interpretation by, as we've seen before.
Maybe we can have a drawing.
We could have a drawing, um, you know, a, a drawing is always good to have in there. But are we gonna cover every scenario in there? Although the planning board, when the planning board sees and it doesn't match what the planning board wants, then they have to change, do what the planning board wants.
Well, a big question that has come up with recent application has been the inclusion of access lanes in that total percentage. And the access lanes in parking lots can be very different, very different amounts of paved area. And so, I mean, maybe distinguish between driveway and parking lot access lanes. And you can exclude the driveway but include the parking lot interior access lanes. Or, or don't, but, um.
Can you define access to, um, delivery? Delivery and pedestrian? Cause you have an access lane coming in Market Basket continues to the backside of the building. And that, to me, should not be needed to include.
It shouldn't be, yeah, I wouldn't think so.
The access to, for pedestrian units of the parking area should, to define it that way.
Ex, ex, excluding entrance and exit driveways. Because Market Basket has a nice little driveway going in. And you're not including that in your parking area.
It's kind of like that, that's.
So the per, parking space seems to be.
It seems like that really simplifies.
Yes.
It does work, you know, as far as when you calculate it out with either the seven percent or the five percent, it works the other way. It's just that you're using, of course, a different figure. You're using square footage per space as opposed to percentage of total square footage. And those again were, let's see, I, I had it broken up into three areas there though. Cause we're, you're reasoning just two. We're going fifty to a hundred, one-on-one and beyond. So fifty to a hundred was ten square feet of internal green space per parking space. Fifty to a hundred spaces. And then I had broken up fifteen square feet for one hundred, two fifty and twenty square feet. What if we then put one hundred spaces and over just the twenty square feet? Uh, twenty square feet per parking space, what we could, it brings on a little type.
Com, compact car parking spots. How do you, how do you deal with that?
No, you deal with it by, we have a hundred and sixty-two square foot parking space requirement in our regulations. It can't go smaller.
Okay, we don't have compact, uh.
No, we don't, just one, one sixty-two, so you, I use the one sixty-two to do it out. So.
Then you get somebody like, truck like mine that comes in and takes up two of your little car spaces. And what do you do about it? Then what do you do about it?
Let's.
Beat my horn, actually. You get, angry people is what you get.
Is it wrong to have the three tiers? I mean, if it works.
The three tiers works. Uh, we just had those two tiers in, I think I just had two tiers open this one here, and I think that's what we want with the two tiers. We could put the three tiers in there for, for that type of.
What were the tiers?
The tiers were fifty to a hundred spaces, ten square feet per space for internal green space. Then we had a hundred to a hundred and fifty, I mean, a hundred to two hundred and fifty spaces. Actually, it would have been one-on-one to two hundred and fifty spaces, fifteen square foot per space. Then we had two hundred and fifty-one and on, twenty square feet per space. Want to just use that?
I like that.
If we use that, then we just have to modify this.
Then, then you're gonna get rid of the, the travel lanes, the, you get rid of all that stuff and have to worry about it.
Out of the calculation, you still have traffic lanes in there and access lanes.
Right, that's what I mean.
Nobody can do so.
You can't use it to calculate, no, whether they're small or big or whatever.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Minimum of a hundred.
It, it, yes, it simplifies it very much.
So let's use a three-tier then, and, and Sarah.
Repeat them for.
Yeah, let me repeat.
First one.
Okay, so we've got the fifty to a hundred spaces.
The ten square feet.
Yes, twenty square feet per, uh, yeah. One hundred and one to two hundred and fifty spaces. It's fifteen square feet per parking space of internal green space we're talking about. And two hundred and fifty spaces on up would be twenty square feet per parking space. Yeah, two hundred and fifty-one. Would be twenty square feet per parking space of internal green space.
Right.
And if Sarah, then you could just change that part of it down there just to accommodate to.
Cause for access lane, you guys can also like add specific more stuff on the driveways if you want that, but not tonight.
No. You don't have to take up everything, Scott. I think Sarah would want us to go home.
So I think we've.
To go to like now.
Kind of nailed it down. So let's go with that. We can, I think that's about the entire planning review regulations that we've done over. So we might be ready for the actual final copy and that public hearing. Do you have one more time?
Um, I sent you an email today, which might throw a wrench in that.
Okay.
Just another little thing you guys might want to review about, um, the, the thirty-day period, when, when approval actually occurs in the thirty-day appeal period? Because there's been a case in the, it's a pretty hard one. Sergio versus Dover, I believe. I emailed Scott right before the meeting, so I'm like, maybe we should discuss this to make sure that our regulations make this really, really, really abundantly clear when the thirty-day appeal period begins. After, it doesn't begin with a conditional approval, doesn't begin with full approval, yada, yada, yada. So, um, I, I think we should revisit.
Yeah, we probably should. I haven't read your email yet.
I figured you wouldn't have.
We'll take a look at that at our next meeting and make sure, but everything else, I think we've probably got nailed down. We'll take a look at that at our next meeting and make sure, but everything else, I think we've probably got nailed down.
Okay.
Yeah, go make sure.
So what does our next meeting look like besides this case that we got in front of us now?
The next meeting also has, um, a new property owner in town wants to convert a trade-in building, one, one thirty-five old homestead. She wants to expand an existing approved use of the property to make a salon essentially. And she's on the agenda for other business to determine, for you to determine if you'll require a site plan modification, site plan review, or what level of review she needs to do to expand the use of, of a hairdresser. So it's really just gonna be looking at her revised version plan, whether or not that's gonna rise to a public hearing. And lesser and this stuff.
Doesn't sound too bad then?
It's always bad if you make it, no?
I know the motion at the beginning, otherwise Sarah.
That's right.
There's a barber shop. The C E A.
Yep. Uh, something like that. I think there has also been a tattoo parlor there, but I'm not sure if the tattoo parlor is gonna be able to stay there. As a, I believe it was one who wanted to come in.
I don't.
It's near the airport, one thirty-five.
Took a big mic, yeah, that's the one that's been turning over and checking all the work things.
One more thing, while we're still on the site plan regs, uh, is there consensus to use Victoria's, uh, sentence? I mean, not sentence, paragraph about the purpose of the site plan review regulations in place of that one that's that long in our original one.
Yeah, I think.
I think it is too.
Purpose, yeah, the purpose should be as short and concise as it can be.
Okay, so.
So the second paragraph is.
Second one there, yeah. One there, I'll put in Victoria's.
Is Victoria's paragraph already contained in the first paragraph?
Oh, actually, it might be, yeah. Um, did we, should we just take, go out and put? If we could take that out, just put Victoria's in.
Okay, so take out number one and two.
Thing.
Page is a one.
Page two.
Yeah, page two.
What's it, what's it, what section?
Oh, we're. It's the very beginning of the site plan review regulations, and it's a purpose section.
Okay.
Or we just have the purpose of them. Okay, so brings us to plan reading workshop. Now, I brought the plans with me. We have a couple of minutes here. I'm not gonna be long with it. Just gonna go over, if anybody's interested, if not, we can both zone into another meeting. I am gonna explain the, uh, the contours on the maps there. They're kind of convoluted to understand. Looking at a map, you see all these weird lines there with the contours on it, the numbers and stuff on there. And I brought a prop to demonstrate what it is, what we're looking at there. So, I only take a couple of minutes, a couple of minutes.
Let's do it.
So I'll bring them, I'll bring it up.
Rule twelve, wanted to be extended. Say, any movement on that? I don't see anything going on.
Working on, on their part. Because they didn't realize that this room was involved, they lost the project and they really read everything.
Wish I might have. Yeah, just wondering, just go by there every once in a while, I've been seeing people off. Yeah, that was my thought too, yes.
They already, you know.
About six months.
Already said that they have established, I think, a potential follow-up. They're reading.
But still haven't announced. Yeah, I can't have one, right?
It kind of feels like.
Well, I, I don't.
We were talking about the contour lines. And I think we reviewed them before, and that they're marked up feet above sea level. And it tells us pretty much, because we're here, I don't mean the sea level. Because it's seat above, I mean, feet above sea level in it, and it shows us what the land does in there. Because again, these are the flat drawing here, and you can't really tell much without that. So what it is, is that we require every five feet. This is done every one move. We require every five feet. So it's like you're taking, going down five feet and taking a cross section of that land across there. And here come, this is what the props.
No, so.
This is right here. This will say the hill right there, and it fits, it fits right there. I drew it on a, there's a sign, so it's that, so that's.
That's my son.
All right, right there, right? So we cut off five feet of it, like that, we see the contour. That's what we're seeing right there, that contour. So if you, you watch the thing, it'll tell you where a valley is and it'll tell you where, we'll say, a peak is. So we're looking at this contour line, it's going away from the high point. High point starts in the center. Watch where your high points start. It doesn't really start in the center, but most of the time it does. So in this case, the high point is in the center. So as you can see, the line is going away from the center. That means there's a ridge there. Now the line is coming back towards the center in this loop here. That means there's a valley, as you can see, there's a valley right there. And then going away, another ridge and around, slope and another valley in there. And same way with that. You know, looking in the same way, we're taking another slice off like that, look like this, there's that one there, trace them again there. So then the high point is here, as you follow it around, you're going away from the high point, so you know that's a crown. And you're coming back toward the center, you know it's dipped in. So you're, you're looking at the land exactly from above, as we're looking here. And you're seeing that, say, in this drawing right here. We'll watch where our high point is. Our high points are up in here, like five hundred feet.
So that's where you start, you're in the highest, what you are saying.
To make, to make sense of it, right here, we got, to make sense of it, look where the high points are. And then you can tell if the line is coming in towards the high point, then it's a valley. If the line is going away from that line point, then it's a high point.
Show, show, so here's.
So here, right here. So here, here is five oh one right there, yeah, five oh three, so we're high over here. That's five oh one right there, that's five hundred. So we're coming in towards it, so there's a valley down.
Okay.
So now you see the thing pointing that way, going away from it, so that means that there's a ridge going there. Now it's coming back this way, it's another valley, so the land is going in and out, in and out like that. So that's, that's how you read these with a little bit of practice and.
How much of a slant of this?
It is flat, that's just what it's for. And you can see here, I've traced these, and you can see that, that when it comes in here, there's a valley, because you can, right to this piece right here, there's a valley right there, and then going away from it is the crown. And again, you're above these drawings, and it's like they took a slice right of it. And, you know, in our regulations, we talk about five percent slope and twenty-five percent slope. And, uh, nobody knows what the hell a five percent slope or twenty-five percent slope, but you know, you can put a protractor on these, it's the only thing. You don't really know what it is, but with these drawings, you can tell how steep the land is or what the slope is. It's, the percentage is, the twenty-five percent slope is, uh, is a twenty-five foot drop in a hundred feet across. So if you're measuring a hundred feet, you've dropped twenty-five feet. If you've got five percent slope, you've dropped five feet in a hundred feet. So that's a slow slope right there. And so you can measure on these where that is. You get the scale, again, you look, always check the scale, forty right there, make your engineer scale there. And let's see, this is a, this is pretty flat right here. So we've got, that's about, that's about twenty feet. There's ten, twenty, there's twenty feet and one foot drop. So twenty into a hundred is five, five times one is five, so that's five percent. We can tell from the drawing, it's five percent slope right there. And we can do the same with these, we can measure out, see what they are like. This one is, uh, now that looks. One, two, three, four, five, let's get a speed. We can drop this on, that doesn't matter, that's the prop. These are one foot intervals, so one, one stair, forty feet. So we got one, two, three, four, five, right there, there's twenty feet, there are five drops, there's five feet there. So again, twenty into a hundred is five, and five times five is twenty-five. So you've got a twenty-five percent slope right there on those lines right there.
So I didn't know whether this is up or down, that's what I knew.
Yeah, that's the confusing part about it, is because, see, this is four ninety, and that's ninety-four, so this is higher than that is. So you know, looking at that, you're example, you know that that, that's a high point right in there, four nine four, four nine four, drop those four nine three, so you're going away from it, like so. So, let's see, uh, the contour line, actually, it's an abrupt contour line here. You're coming right to a, a standpoint right there and going down. This is a poor example to, to show that, because the land drops off considerably down here, as you can see, it's very steep. And it's going that way, it's not going up, it's going away from.
How do I know that it's going?
Well, you know, you know, because these contour lines, four ninety goes there, and then it turns a corner and goes all the way. It's still four ninety right there, always through there, and it'll come out on the other side, four ninety right there. So you know that that's four ninety, you know that's four ninety-four, so you know that's a valley. You know that's, that's getting pretty low pretty fast too. The twenty-five percent, I think, is our maximum that you can develop on.
Fix my brain.
But yeah, it's, I know, it's, it's confusing to see them like that.
I'll tell you guys all the cheat.
Okay.
If you glance at a plan and you see the lines are really close together, you know something's happening there and you request more information.
You're asking engineering.
This is the law.
Asking you to do.
That's right, if there's no lines anywhere on it, you're in the great salt lake.
Exactly. Exactly.
But you. Just keep in mind, if the, if the line is going away from your highest, highest area there, and you know it's outpropping, if the line is coming back towards the higher.
Here's my highest point, and the line is going away.
Yes, so here's, here's your highest point here, so the line is coming to it a little bit like that. So that's a lower area there. Now the line is going away from it, it's coming this way, so that's a little bit higher right there. But again, this is so flat, this is a tough one to, to go by. You go here, the line is going away from this higher area, so that's a, that's a plane, that's, that's this area here.
I think about Larry Coates, remember that, that the green space in the middle, it was like a mountain with surrounded by all that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I couldn't picture that at the time.
That.
That would be a really good one to make that, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be something like that, right?
Yeah.
Quite steep.
Yeah.
I think they should have, talk to the kids over to high school. They need this kind of thing.
They do need this, gonna.
First of all, most of them are gonna learn how to read rights first.
One, if you want back, it'd be nice to, you know, beating the content.
Yeah, I would say, what, top of.
But you, you would have a teaching the kids that you do.
Yeah, it's just, something to, to think it draws to the deadline that they might set up for. And let's spend some time with any of these drawings as they come up to our planning board. And, uh, and you get just a little bit of help, they work. And it's, it's, there's a lot more on it that we'll go through. We'll get into the drainage and how to read the, uh, the everts and all that type of stuff in there, which is pretty interesting too. It'll tell us a lot of stuff we need to know.
We can always ask you, but we can always ask you to.
You can, but you won't know if I'm telling you or not.
No.
No, that's it for today.
Who's got the apple?
I'll have to get him a, work time job.
Mr. Chairman, I'm waiting for the chairman for the evening.
There's a motion to adjourn by, is there any other visits come before the board, anybody? Then a motion to adjourn by the stage, is there a second? Second, anybody written, any further discussion? A vote in favor, negated.